It is now six o'clock. At this time, I'll call the regular meeting of the Perry City Council for Tuesday, April the 21st, 2020, to order. We have a quorum. At this time, I'd ask you to stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Protem King will lead us in invitation, and Dr. Albritton will do the pledge.
Just by here, please. Father God, we are so grateful to your love and your mercy. Lord, during this pandemic, we ask for your guidance and your protection over each family, especially here in Perry. And Lord, we want to thank you for the council coming together, and all the city officials. And Lord, we thank you for the administration. And we ask you, our Father, to continue to guide us and protect us and keep us, that we continue to do what CDC says, Lord, that we protect ourselves. We do thank you, we do praise you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and it is the flag for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda this evening is recognitions and presentations. Item four A is a proclamation recognizing Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And I'm sorry that Ms. Warren left. I thought she was going to be here, but we do have a proclamation. It's the 51st Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. It's going to be May the 3rd through May the 9th, 2020. Whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerks, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, whereas the Office of the Professional Merchant's Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at all levels. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. Where it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplement accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Randall Walker, Mayor of the City of Perry, Georgia, do recognize the week of May the 3rd through May the 9th, 2020, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Annie Warren, and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent dated today, April the 21st, 2020, by Randall Walker. And I'm sorry that Annie is not here to be recognized, but she does an outstanding job, and we really enjoy having the services that she supplies to each and every one of us. And so, we will, during the week of the 3rd, we will recognize her appropriately as our Municipal Clerk Clerk, so that will be done. Item five is a review of the minutes. Item five, council members, you have been provided the minutes of the April 7th, 2020 council meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented. There's a motion in the second. Is there any additions, deletions, or changes to the minutes that have been presented? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Please let the record show that the minutes were approved unanimously. Item six on our agenda this evening is old business. Six A is from the mayor. I have none. Six B is from council members. Ms. Bynum, brace? Mr. King?
I have none.
Mr. Albritton?
None.
Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
Mr. Jones?
No, sir.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Is there any old business from the city attorney? Ms. Newby?
No, sir.
Is there any old business from the city manager, Mr. Lee Gilmore?
No, sir.
Is there any old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item seven on our agenda is new business. Seven A is a presentation of e-gaming sports leagues by Mr. Swan from our Leisure Services Group. Mr. Swan, would you want to give us, give us your presentation, please?
Sir, excuse me. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I started pre-keeping off against stating, I missed a statement here. Leisure Services Department, we strive to provide community, provide the community with opportunities to enhance their physical, social, and emotional well-being in a constant way or manner, according to the needs of all citizens. And I think that's important that we mentioned, according to the needs of all citizens. And I roll into my proposal. My objective today is to provide recreational programs to the citizens of Perry through the platform of electric gaming, or e-gaming. We've noticed that we, while doing our strategic planning process, we've noticed that we need to provide more innovative recreational opportunities, and especially during these times with COVID-19 and social distancing, convenient leisure opportunities, having opportunity to participate and socialize from the house is very key. The engagement of our citizens, we, I'm sorry, we decided that we needed to focus on the area of engaging our citizens that don't normally participate in general leisure activities, you know, sports and the generalized notion of things that we do at our rent centers. The proposal, or what I wanted to bring to council is, there's a company, Mission Control, they're based out of North Carolina. They have a service, it's a gaming platform, and allows agencies to host electronic gaming competitions remotely. So, in essence, we will have the opportunity to offer league play, or just leisure play, to those citizens at home. And this can be something continuous that we use throughout the year. Specifically, they have nine current games available, and they're all of the major sports, all the professional sports. Got basketball, football, baseball, and I think they even have NASCAR. And then there's racing and adventure games, as I mentioned, NASCAR and Mario Kart and Rocket League. Not too familiar with those, but my kids were very excited when I mentioned them. And after August 1st, there'll be 30 additional games added to the platform. The fee structure, there's a $600 initial setup fee, and that's for all agencies that go into, enter into agreement before August 1st. After August 1st, it'll be a $1,500 setup fee. And the fee structure is set up on authorized users. So, it goes from anywhere to 40 users maximum, to 500 plus. My recommendation is to test it out in tier two. We allow 41 to 150 users to access our platform to participate. The agencies set the fees, and you receive a 90 percent, what do you call it, 90 percent revenue share check each month, and that's it by the 30th of the following month. Next slide, please. Now, my recommendation is to enter into an agreement with Mission Control, and the official, no, I'm sorry, the initial setup fee will be $600 before August 1st. And I recommend tier two is amended before, because of, we'll be able to test how popular the gaming platform is, for a total investment of $1,800. Now, doing some research to see if there's some viable for our city, and forgive my typo, there's approximately 57.4 million online gamers in the United States currently. Forty-one percent of them registered that they like to participate in action games, sporting games, so it kind of aligns with what Mission Control offers currently. And according to Georgia Trend Magazine, e-gaming generates $830 million to the state, economic impact. And one great fact that I found out during my research, is that City of Perry will be the only municipality with municipal recreation agency offering these services to their citizens. Now, Dallas, Texas currently offices program, and speaking with their director, they have great, there's been a great, excuse me, a great response, and they're looking to extend it, to extend the amount of users that'll be available. And local colleges and universities, I think Georgia and Georgia Tech are currently allowing intramural play on their campuses. And I'll open up the floor for any questions or comments you might have. Turn to.
Council members, what questions do you have relative to setting up this e-gaming here through leisure services?
I have some questions. Would it be only sports games, nothing mythical, or, you know, outshoot the enemy kind of thing?
Currently, they have adventure games.
What's that mean exactly?
And I guess what I'm alluding to, I think your question might be, are we doing any first-person shooters? Is that what you're asking? No, ma'am. Mr. Smith brought a great point up. Because of the controversy and the issues surrounding first-person shooters and promotion of violence, you think it would be safer for the City of Perry not to promote those kind of games?
Right.
And to stick to sporting games, and racing, and adventure games?
When they bring all the additional games online, will you have an option, or would the city have an option, as to which of those games to accept and which not to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How about, and when you talk about the income that it generates, who does it income, who does it generate income for? And would Perry receive any of that income?
So, the statistics that I shared were general economic impact, going to video game stores and participating in tournaments, but specifically for Perry, we, the goal is to charge a fee, just as we would do any other sport or any other activity, charge a participation fee. And those funds will come to our, to us.
But as far as the gaming industry itself, we wouldn't generate any income from the city from that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I think probably my biggest concern would be the quality of, or the type of games.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Mr. Hunt?
I couldn't hear a word you said, with a mask and my hearing aids in the shop, so I don't know what you said. I read all this, and what I read, I'm not interested.
You have any specific objections that you, or it's just that you're not in, not wanting to consider gaming at all? Is there, you have a concern, specific concerns of money?
One specific concern. Number two, I just, not in favor of it, okay?
Ms. Peterson?
I think I'd like to say is that, I think it's very interesting, you know what I mean? I think with the investment of $600, and then getting started, and see how many people can we revenue, especially young people, get involved into it. If we get that going, then like you said, that would be an income for the city, just like anything else do in our rent department. If they're playing softball, they gotta pay. If they're playing football, they gotta pay. Whatever they're doing, it has to be paid. It's not just that we're gonna put money out there, and it's gonna be lost, because if we find that people are interested in it, then we'll continue. If not, I'm sure with your wisdom there, we're gonna cut it off. We're not gonna try to continue to do something that we got people interested in.
Yes, sir. What other questions might you have relative to this?
Senator, how much would the participation fee be?
Honestly, we base all of our recreation programs on break-even analysis. So I think with the tier that we're using, the cost of users is approximately $7 to make our money back, our initial investment back. And that's an anonymous fee. I think the market rate was $20 per lead, so there would be options for making a profit.
Now, I always have concerns about people spending too much time in front of a screen, but I don't think that offering this would pull somebody off of a baseball field. I mean, these are people that are gonna do this anyway, right?
Yes, sir. And you have the opportunity, like I said, it's leisure, you know, rainy days, social distancing, schools out, these are ideal times to play video games.
Since I'm a gamer, I like that idea.
I'm sorry, Ms. Bynum.
See, I am a gamer.
Do you like it? Any other questions? Are there any conditions that you would want to accept as a sign? I appreciate your clarification, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So there's no confusion. Is council okay to go ahead with this or not? I think that's the primary thing we need to know right now. Because remember, remember the deadline time of August, and the price kicks up, so.
My only concern would be that we, and I want this very clear, that we had to choose which games we offered, and that may be sports related and not mythical, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
That might sound like a grandmother, I apologize for that, but I am a grandmother, so sports come on for it.
And you feel like the we can control the content of the games that are presented? So what, what happens if people want the different games, the mystical games and those type things, sir?
Just whole firm of our policy and our beliefs as a city. You know, we, you have the option to go purchase those games and play. If there's other platforms, PlayStation, Xbox have their own platform, so if that's your interest, we recommend you seek that way.
Going back to Mr. Gilmore's question, are you, do you have enough information this evening to vote on this issue? Given that, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the gaming, e-gaming proposal presented by Mr. Swan. But move.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed? Please let the record show that Mr. Hunt voted in opposition of this. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor. That is with the condition firming about choosing the games, correct?
That's right. Exactly. Us filtering the programs that are offered through that program is my understanding of their requirement. Is that correctly stated, Ms. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I mean, we'd be able to monitor and eliminate games that were not sports. I mean, you're the rent department, so you know we want sports, yeah.
Item seven B is a business guide for the City of Perry. Ms. Harden?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to stand down here at this side, please. For Hunt can hear me if I can see that wall from here. So tonight, I'm here for you to present a business guide that we put together. Recently, Lee Gilmore asked that I put together a how-to outline on starting a new business for new construction, renovation, downtown, and just how to open a business. So we took some information that we currently have on our website, as well as some information that Community Development had in their development portal, and we'll go through this. This is our start of a new business guide for the City of Perry. And I think the first page is probably the most important thing we have here, because it's a checklist. It's a step-by-step process that takes you through each step, including permitting, your fire marshal, and your community development, building inspections. Since we do require permits for signage, we have that on there. And since I've been here now for 18 months, so that is some feedback that we've received from the business community is, hey, do you have a checklist? And since we do have a lot of military in this area, they want to see an outline process as well. So we started with the checklist, which is on page one of this PDF that we put together. And then we cover zoning, because zoning is very important, and we discuss to verify your zoning before you sign a lease, and before you purchase property. There's also information on the rezoning process, but not everything gets rezoned in favor, depending on what the outlined zoning is. So we made sure to include that. And in this PDF, also have links to applications and development portal, and things of that nature. So it is an interactive PDF that we can put on our website. This one talks about the building permits, new construction, renovations. So we did try to pretty it up with some artwork throughout the guide. The current document on the city website, just like the city logo, and it's about four pages of a Word doc, so this is all important information, so some of it you do have to read heavily, but we did try to pretty it up some. This one discusses inspections, and we also break out which inspections are done by the Community Development Department, as well as the Fire Department. This one, it talks about the occupational tax certificate, which is also known as the business license, and it takes you through that process. This is the downtown one, and it also features the downtown business programs and incentives that are available to businesses. We also address home occupation. And then the last two slides do talk about the signs, for the signs permit, food service, alcohol sales. We have a list of all the city utilities and the utility of partners in the city as well. And then at the end, we have a list of additional business resources, such as the SBDC score in the college and the chamber as well. So that's in your board pack. It looks really pretty on the PDF, and we just wanted to share that with you, and get any thoughts or feedback. If you'd just want a little bit more detail to do, we just are here to present that to you.
So do you want to have any questions or feedback for Ms. Harden at this time?
I do. I think that's a good guess to go and put that plan together, and I like how you laid that upon her. And I think anyone who comes to the city who wants to start a business, I think you kind of like put a lot of good information in there, so they can do their own research and go and get the business started in the city of Perry. And thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. I will say it was Mr. Gilmore's idea.
No, no, no. It was council's direction that that be done.
And then on the design, I did that in-house, literally. I had my husband, who did the cover, and he helped me with some of the layout features, and even went as far as to take a picture, and he surprised me at the end with the water tower, because I didn't know that would be in there, so, thank you.
Well, you want to thank the other one.
It's a very nice piece, it's very informative, and I think it's going to help people as they start their, you know, opening a business here, or wanting to develop businesses here, gives them an idea who to contact, what process they have to go through, and it looks to me, going through it, it's very clear. So, thank you very much for all the hard work that all of you, including your husband, has put into this, and so I think it'll be a very useful tool.
Thank you. Very redefining.
If I may, Mayor, just one other thing, too. Not only will you be able to get it online, but we will also have hard copies down in customer service. We'll have them to the chamber, if the chair, chamber wants to distribute them, and also at the convention and visitors bureau, and any other retailers, real estate people, whoever think they may be interested in having something there for people coming into the city. I like that.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. Item seven C on our agenda this evening is ordinances for the first reading and introduction. Seven C one is the first reading of a wireless facility, an antenna act ordinance. Mrs. Newby, you want to carry us through that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, first just to explain to you what a wireless facility is. It's also known as a small cell wireless facility, but it's a, usually a metal box that is attached to an existing light pole or decorative pole that's placed in the right-of-way that helps boost telecommunications signals. So think Verizon Wireless, T-Mobile, those types of companies will be who this applies to. But the ordinance before you is to allow the city to comply with state and federal law. Legislation was passed and went into effect October 1st of 2019, dealing with wireless facilities and their placement in the right-of-ways, while still allowing the city to maintain as much local control as possible, specifically as it relates to aesthetic standards and creating an application process, so that we're able to monitor these facilities as they come into the city, and also require them to meet the standards that we're able to put into place, like I said, to control the aesthetic, the aesthetics of the wireless facilities. And this is a first reading, so there's no action tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
What questions do you have this evening for Ms. Newby?
I have one. Ms. Newby, I'm coming at a time to get my business started. If I want to get this communication service started, do I have to come by the city, get an application, and fit it out, or what procedure I have to go through to get it, so I can get it established, so I won't get in trouble with the law?
So, there's an exhibit A that's attached as a permit application to this ordinance that Mr. Wood's office, with the Department of Community Development, will be the department that accepts these applications, reviews them to make sure that they're complete, and then issues the permit. So this ordinance explains, explains that, that that's the department that you would contact relative to being able to get a permit for a wireless facility to be installed in the right-of-way. Did that answer your question?
This is only applicable to someone wanting to come into our right-of-ways and set up some type of wireless devices. It could be G5, you know, or G4, whatever they're looking for, but this is defined, as I understand it, by state and federal law, and all this does is make us compliant with that law that was passed in 19.
Yes, sir. That's correct. And also allows the city to be able to have as much local control over their placement and how they look, the application process, the fees that they have to pay to the city to locate within the right-of-way. And it also encourages what's called co-location, meaning it encourages that they have to install their wireless facility on an existing pole.
What other questions? This is a first reading of this, and there's no action required on the part of the council this evening. Thank you, Ms. Newby. Seven D is resolutions for consideration and adoption. Seven D one is a resolution to amend the Perry fee schedule. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your packet is a resolution that adjusts the fees for three reasons. The first one is for the automatic traffic sign charges. You may remember that you all approved to proceed with that. The second is to provide for a 65-gallon recycling bin, which we do not currently have in our schedule. And the third goes back to make an adjustment relative to people after the second notice who damage our meters, damage the meter box and lid, or damage the MXU, which is electronic device that sits on top, that sends out the signal. And we're recommending to you to amend the schedule accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. What questions do you have relative to the recommended fee changes?
Mr. Gilmore, I know that this will happen, and we make sure that everybody feel aware of what we're doing. I know that we get the letters out to all our customers, so they all know that this is what taking place, so it won't catch my surprise.
Yes, sir. The, following up on Mr. King's point, we've already notified, and people are aware, if they damage one of our meters a second time, they're going to have to have a charge. This just goes back and addresses, you can see from the resolution, the MXU unit itself.
The 65-gallon recycling bin, is that a commercial?
Yes. As far as I know, the only business that uses that is Sandler Non-Woven, but you could have somebody, but it's a commercial site, it's not a residential store.
Okay. And what are they currently paying for their recycling?
They recharge them exactly what advanced disposal charges us, but we have to incorporate in our fee schedule.
Other questions? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution adjusting the Perry's fee schedules as outlined by At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution adjusting the Perry's fee schedules as outlined by Mr. Gilmore.
Go ahead.
There's a motion. Motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the resolution was approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Item seven E is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Perry and the Houston County Land Bank. Ms. Newby?
Thank you, Mayor. Turn the slide, please. Mayor and council, before you for consideration tonight is an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Houston County Land Bank. This agreement is in furtherance of the city's blight remediation efforts. The land bank, or Houston County Land Bank, is currently the owner of this property. And this intergovernmental agreement would allow the city to provide demolition services on this property.
What questions do you have relative to this intergovernmental agreement? I know this is something that we've been working with Habitat, I think, through the land bank to remove this house and have a new home built there as part of their project, so, questions? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Perry and Houston County Land Bank.
Second.
There's a motion in second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the, that the intergovernmental agreement was approved unanimously. Thank you. Item seven F is approval of a sidewalk encroachment at 809 Carroll Street. And this evening, Mr. John Holbert has asked to address us relative to this site and give us some additional information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I assume that you want me to present, but this is our proposal to have a ramp installed for ADA compliance in front of the Houston banking company building, which was formerly Jones Survey Building downtown Perry. We have been back and forth with the city at this point, I believe, in a positive manner. I hope I'm characterizing that appropriately, but in a positive manner, in trying to come up with a satisfactory method of obtaining ADA access. Our, the proposal as shown creates a ramp in front of Recollections, which is a building owned by Mr. Tommy Long. The reason it does that is because the grade of the street, it falls as you head back towards the old Rusty's building and to accomplish the ADA compliant ramp, we, it's a shorter ramp if we start there. I spoke with Mr. Long. He, he does not want that. Out of consideration for him as a property owner, we are submitting this, but we are certainly exploring other avenues. The tenant is going to be Morris Bank. And I think, first of all, if I may, I think they're going to be an excellent tenant for the City of Perry, not just Main Street or Carroll Street. They have a history of pouring into their community that they, they set up offices in. They have asked us, and on our own, we would like to as well consider having this building designated under the state Historic Preservation Office, I think is the, is the appropriate office. If we are able to do that, and of course, we would be back in front of the city seeking to obtain possibly an alternate method of achieving some, some ADA compliance. What we, our vision would be, and this is our vision, would be to create a potential access point, alternate route along the alley that travels behind the 800 block of Carroll Street. Every, if you look on Carroll Street, every one of those buildings had just, well, let me take that back. Not every one of those buildings. A number of buildings have steps, which if they ever do anything to those buildings, is going to otherwise require ramps. So the concern, I think, the larger concern for the city is we feel like this would achieve potentially ADA access behind the building. We certainly don't have permission for that yet, but that's what we're trying to achieve, rather than putting ramps all along the front of the 800 block of Carroll Street, which the 900 block has some of the same issues going for it. If you, all you have to do is ride downtown and look at the different buildings with steps. So we are putting this in front of the council tonight, just in all candor. I don't see this as a viable option for us. If we have to put in a ramp, my concern is the ramp will have to start down there at the Rusty's end of the building, and it will be much longer to achieve the, and, and, correct me if I had to say this wrong, but a one inch per, one foot of ramp per one inch of height. And I think at its, at its point in front of the store is 18 inches above grade, so you're looking at a long ramp. The other alternative suggested to us, which I don't, it was a wheelchair lift. It would involve us cutting out portions of the, of the steps and possibly cutting out portions of tile work on the landing, which, which none of us felt like, we just didn't feel like that was an appropriate use of that, that mosaic tile of the building. For reference purposes, that building was, was set up as a bank in the early part of the 1900s, probably around 1905. So we feel like it's, it's, we feel like it achieves a historic designation, but we are asking the state at this point to consider that. If they do, we will be back in front of you all, you know, asking for potential options behind the building. Without putting, without committing to anything, the bank has indicated willingness to potentially partner with the city. We, as landowners, would certainly want to partner with the city. We feel like this would be an opportunity for the, the bank to pour back into the city and, as well as as landowners, and possibly achieve a, a larger vision for, for downtown, so.
Any questions if Mr. Holbert lies here?
I was wondering, are you currently planning for the back of the building to have quote-unquote a formal entrance?
We have, in the back of the building, because it is a bank, it has to have a solid door. And it does have, we have bricked up the windows for security reasons. Again, what we would be asking is that the, the city allow us to put in handicap accessibility. I think the code, and again, I'm no expert on the ADA code. But, but what the code allows, if, if a door must remain locked, then there would be devices where someone could pick up a phone and immediately someone would be asked for it. I think similar to what the courthouse has here. If you have a handicap or need assistance getting into the courthouse, pick up a phone, and rings, and someone will assist you.
I get, I don't have a visual of the back of that building. I apologize for that. But, so would the back of the building be as easily accessible as the front of the building? For anyone, whether they needed a wheelchair entrance or not?
That would certainly have to be one of the requirements, which we're aware of. But, but that would certainly be the, the anticipated goal of what we do. So, you know, if you, if you look at that alley, the only thing I would say is look at that alley with, with what it can be because it's overgrown by weeds, but you've got at least two more businesses. And again, verify this on your own, but it, from where I was looking, there's at least two more businesses that if they do anything with their building, they're going to run into the same situation, having to put a ramp in, into the sidewalk, which is obviously city property. It's not private property, but you'd have to have additional ramps along the 800 block if you don't, if you cannot figure out a method of getting the alternative.
John, would there be parking back there for them? Would they have to park on the street and then go to the back?
Yes, it is, and, and again, if you look at where the alley starts off of Ball Street, it is probably about 100 feet, and that's a crude measurement, but that's using the Tax Assessor's website. But from the curb to the actual back door of the bank building is about 100 feet. If, now, there are, the problem is there are no handicap parking spaces right there on Ball Street. So again, it's a larger issue than, than, than what we're doing here, but I just, in all candor, we are submitting that before the council, but I do want to be truthful in that we, we at the same time are considering alternate access points.
Any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a comment, hopefully would provide some additional clarification. To provide access to the front of the building where the primary entrance is, that is what this ramp does. It is based on what we've looked at, the least obtrusive method other than a lift, which has other issues related to the building itself. One of the concerns that we've had in looking at using the rear as an access is the length of, the length that it takes to get from the existing handicap spaces to that area. I talked to Mr. Holbert yesterday, and I felt like he needed to move forward with this proposal as a legitimate option. He may not decide to use this ultimately, but we wanted to go ahead and have that as an option that he could fall back on if he wants to. If the state Historic Preservation Office does provide for the ability to reconsider that rear access, then I also indicated to him that we would also look at where handicap spaces downtown may need to be relocated to be more accessible to all parts of downtown. So that's certainly something that I think we would take a look at in the future as well, if that becomes a viable option for the rear access.
Thank you. Dr. Holbert?
I may have missed this. You mentioned, like, this sidewalk encroachment interferes with another landowner?
Well, and let me be real clear. The, the deeds themselves describe the parcels of land through a, through feet, 90 feet, 105 feet, up to the right-of-way of Carroll Street. But the actual right-of-way of Carroll Street is the, is the front, well, not the front door, but the front porch of those buildings. So, so I guess what I, I may not be explaining this well, but the 11, 811 Carroll Street up there, the encroachment is technically the city's property. However, it is right in front of the front door of, and in that case, I believe that's Mr. Tommy Long's building. Does that answer your question?
So we're voting on this tonight?
Well, no, if you don't have enough information, we're just, we, they brought it to you for a suggestion. We'll, we'll be working through it. If we don't have enough information, then we will postpone the, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could also, just to clarify, on the property that's listed as 811 Carroll Street, the little inset that you see here, this is where the entrance to that building is. There is an actual step down from their property onto the sidewalk. So the, the required ramp slope, as I understand it, would have ended somewhere in the middle of this. What is proposed here is to provide a landing at that step up into 811, and then extend the ramp down a little more. So in effect, what this does is provides handicapped access to both 811 Carroll Street and 809 Carroll Street.
Does the ramp at that point have handrails?
Handrails are not proposed on this ramp at this time.
And you say Mr. Long is not?
When I talked to Mr. Long, he, he, and I didn't push him or press him, but he said, oh, no, 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 I wouldn't want that, you know.
Council members, any other questions you have at this time?
Was the ADA compliance for getting into the, to his property?
His? Well, he's essentially not, he-
Has not?
Yeah. Right now, he doesn't have to comply because he hasn't done anything to his building to trigger that requirement. But what this does is provides that handicapped access so that in the future, he would not have to provide that.
Even though the business, that's a different business in there now?
Correct. But if he were to go in and make significant modifications to the building, that would trigger the requirement to comply with ADA.
Thank you, Mr. Holbert. Council members, we, we've been looking at this over the last few weeks, and there's been a large amount of discussion. So we've asked Ms. Newby to kind of give us an idea of where we are legally with the ADA requirements for this type of building so she can explain to you what the requirements are and what you will be looking at to move forward with making this decision. So, Ms. Newby, could you bring us up to speed on your research?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. And I have, there's been a lot of correspondence back and forth between the city and the party with Mr. Bryant. And I've researched all of the citations that are referenced back and forth regarding the ADA regulations. Some of the regulations that Mr. Bryant cites are under Title II of the ADA, which would not apply here to this type of building because that applies to state and local governments. It doesn't apply to commercial facilities or public accommodations. But even with that, the one part that is correct, which Mr. Holbert properly introduced and characterized, is that there is an exception for a qualified historic building. And so if this building, if they do obtain a designation of it being a historic building, and that can be done through either the National Historic Register or through the state office, then at that point, the property owner has the right to ask the state Historic Preservation Office to review the alterations and the changes that they're doing, to look at the nature and character of their building, and provide a comment letter to the local governing authority as to whether or not having to fully comply with all of the ADA requirements, in this case with access to the front of the building, would damage the building or take away from its historical significance. And if they make that determination, issue that letter, then it's back to the local governing authority to consider to allow an exception, to permit an exception so that there can be other ADA access, which is what Mr. Holbert was describing in their proposed alternate route through the alleyway. But as it currently, as the facts are today, until such a designation is obtained, then to satisfy the ADA requirements and be in compliance, the property owner would need to provide access to the front of the building in one of the two ways that have been discussed already, either the lift or a ramp.
Questions, council members?
So I feel like I'm out of the loop on this. Is the bank, has the bank purchased this building? So all of this is-
Yes, sir. My understanding is that, I can't remember the, the two names of the entities, but it's two different entities that own the building. And they're doing all of the development and renovations for Morris Bank as their tenant. So the amount of substantial renovations that are taking place on the property is what Mr. Wood alluded to earlier, is what triggers these ADA compliance requirements.
I'm still confused. Are you confused?
No.
You're not? So we're talking about two buildings here.
They're really only talking about one, 809.
Right. 809 is going to be a future Morris Bank.
Yes, sir.
And, and they are in the process right now of renovating this building, but they own it.
Well-
No, the developers own it.
The developers own it, and Morris Bank is going to be a long-term tenant.
Okay, and right beside them is Mr. Long and his business.
Yes, sir.
Or he owns the building and there's a, a business there.
Right, a retail.
And so we're going to vote tonight on whether to put a ramp.
I don't, I don't know that we're going to do that. We've got some additional information we'll share with you, and then let you guys make a decision on which way you want to go. And there'll be time for additional research.
And also, just to clarify, I know this is the, the proposal, but I think the, the request is for the city to consider allowing them an encroachment on the sidewalk if needed to be able to provide their ADA access. And so that could be what's been presented, this ramp that runs in front of Mr. Long's building. Or if it could be, I guess, a ramp like Mr. Holbert mentioned, running the other way. So, but I think that the request is the ability to- So, but I think that the request is the ability to encroach upon the sidewalk to try and meet that, that ADA compliance.
Mr. Gilmore, your comments relative to this?
Well, Mayor, council, I think that there are three different options. First option is if the owners of the building and the tenant, Morris Bank, want to open up as soon as possible, they have to get a certificate of occupancy. As Ms. Newby indicated, there will not be a certificate of occupancy issued until ADA access to the front of the building is handed, which appears, and that'll be council's decision about how much of the encroachment you want to allow, but you don't have to vote on that. Everybody with me? That's option number one. Option number two is that the owners of the building could hold up and not do anything until they go through the process of applying and get a determination from the state about whether this building possibly complies with the historic exception. Um, if they do that, then there won't be any certificate of occupancy issued until some answer comes out, and therefore, the tenant needs to wait. And I don't know how long that process is going to be, since it's a state agency, we have no control over. Third option would be, if council is agreeable to this, that the owners and Morris Bank are given a temporary certificate of occupancy so that the tenant can come in and work with the understanding that, number one, the temporary certificate of occupancy would not be issued until the city receives documentation that the owners have made the application for the historic designation. Not that they say they did, but that they provide documentation, which I, as Mr. Holbert indicated, that they're working on, okay? Assuming everything else other than the ADA, ADA situation is taken care of, they have the temporary certificate. And that temporary certificate would be good for probably about, uh, four months, six months, something like that. And if passed or needed, the council could extend it as long as the owners are acting in good faith relative to the, uh, application to the state. That would address the owner's major concern, I believe, right now, and certainly the proposed tenants, and it also protects the city relative to the issue about ADA access. Now, at the time that, and so, I want to make sure all the parties understand, is that the time the state agency, historic group, comes out and makes their determination, if they say no, they may have a bunch of caveats, but if they say no, then the owners are back and coming back before you to try and get some type of resolution about ADA access off of Carol Street, and the temporary certificate of occupancy would be pulled if they don't make that application, and Morris Bank shuts down. Or, which I think all the parties are really interested in, including the city, is that if the historical group says yes, subject to, or could be, but it's a local decision, either through the, uh, fire marshal as a legal ADA contributor or through the city council, uh, then they would be able to proceed with the use of the alley. Now, if they proceed with the use of the alley, which, uh, Mr. Holbert indicated they are talking, working on and everything, two things would have to occur, well, three things. One would be the okay from council to proceed. The second is that, that length in the alley from their pad, I believe, or from their door to whichever public right of way you decide to go to would have to meet all the ADA requirements, and there would have to be written agreement from each of the property owners about crossing their property as an easement, since, as I think most of us should be familiar, the city does not own the alley. In conjunction with that, as Mr. Holbert and Mr. Wood indicated, the administration would also recommend to assist on this, that a parking space on Ball Street, close to where the alley comes out, kind of by Bodega Brew, but not at, no, it's my reference, Bodega Brew, but, uh, not right there, that we would, the city would designate a parking space for handicap. Uh, as has been talked about, you know, by Mr. Wood, is the administration believes that this is going to be an ongoing issue as the popularity with downtown increases and there's more interest to shift over uses, kind of following up in Ms. Peterson's point, uh, transitioning from just a standard retail to a restaurant or some type of office space or housing, you know, whatever the case may be. And so, that's the administration's recommendation to the council. I think the best way for all parties, but this is just the manager's position, is that if the owners are agreeable and council feels that it makes sense, would be to go with the temporary certificate of occupancy underneath the conditions that have been outlined, and then just have to see what happens.
Mr. Gilmore, would that require some type of temporary access to the front door, some type of ramping or something for ADA?
Yes. There, there would have to be some type of, like, portable ramp that comes out, or the bank would have to give, demonstrate some type of procedure about how they're going to get any type of, uh, person with disability or difficulty getting into the bank, and that'd be some plan that they would have to provide to us, okay? For example, um, they may say they're going to send out five staff members and pick up the person and take them up the stair. Well, if that seems to be acceptable, then that's what we'd wind up doing. Uh, we have not historically had ADA access issues in the downtown, even though they are older buildings, but that does not negate the city's obligation to make sure that ADA is addressed.
Council members, questions? Dr. Albrit, is that a little, little better there? Okay. Questions? So, what is your preference, council members? Third one?
The temporary.
Mr. Gilmore, do we need a vote on that?
Yes, I recommend that you do.
All right. You've heard the proposal from Mr. Gilmore that outlined three different options. Um, if the council is agreeable, we can move forward with option three, if that's what you want to do, giving the developers the opportunity to go to the Historic Society or Preservation Group and get the letter, and we would allow them to open on a temporary CO until such a designation is made for them to, what they're going to be required to do long-term. Does that pretty well describe it?
Perfect.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept item three that has been outlined by Mr. Gilmore relative to the ADA access at 809 Carol Street. The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the council voted unanimously to accept the option three outlined by Mr. Gilmore. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Thank you, Mr. Holbert. Appreciate you guys coming this evening and sharing that with us. Council members, seven G, uh, I would ask that you vote to table this item for additional research. There's been some discussion around it. Mr. Gilmore has asked us to table this one at this time. Now, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to table the, considering amending the city's services billing process. Motion is second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Please let the record show that the item seven G, the amending the city services billing process, was tabled to a later date. Seven H is approval to go to bid for the Houston Lake Drive Sidewalk Project. I know we had a, a good bit of a discussion at our last meeting, uh, maybe two meetings ago, relative to installing a sidewalk on Houston Lake Drive that would carry it all the way down to Carol Alley. Uh, Mr. Gilmore, would you like to share your findings with us on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, council members, in your board pack, you have a copy of the estimated cost from the engineer for this sidewalk project, and you also have a copy of the layout plan, which runs along the criteria that you all had established when you authorized to start off with this project. Uh, what we are asking for tonight is for council's approval to proceed with going to bid for this project. Uh, however, I do want to point out, if you take a look at the map, there are a series of temporary easements that have to be obtained for construction. So, if you authorize to go ahead with this project, we'll have to take care of those easements first and then go out to bid. And if there's any type of delay or problem, we'll be back to you to let you know. Uh, in answer to some of the questions that came up, yes, there are going to be some of those trees, and it actually should be Houston Lake Drive, not, uh, Houston Lake Road, like you have up there. Uh, just wanted to invite you that some of those trees are going to have to come out, you know, in this project. Uh, the administration's recommendation to you would be to go ahead and proceed with this. The funding for this project will come from SPOLOST 18 Construction Fund.
What questions do you have, council members? Any questions? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve going to bid for the Houston Lake Drive Sidewalk Project as outlined. I got a motion? We got a motion in second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the approval was unanimous for the sidewalk project. Backing up to, please, can you back up another slide? There's the next one, seven, no, go the other way, seven G. Um, Mr. Gilmore, on our board pack, seven G is talking about the base charges, uh, for access on the accounts. Do you want to review that this evening, or do you want to do it later?
Uh, I, I prefer to do it later.
Okay. Thank you. Item seven I is council approval to proceed with funding request to the Perry Public Facilities Authority. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and councilman, your board pack is a memo from me, where the administration recommends council to approve approaching the Perry Public Facilities Authority to fund two projects. The first one is assuming that a, an agreement can be reached, you all already have a okay to proceed with it, would be for the acquisition improvements to the Houston County Government Building, which is the old courthouse. I think you all are familiar with the discussion on that project. The second is a project that has been a problem for at least the last 20 years. We have taken every single option, as far as I know, to try and correct it, and that is the sewer main running down Perry Branch. Everybody familiar with Perry Branch is, like, going Cambridge by the, uh, uh, what used to be the, uh, uh, school for the preschool?
Perry Primary.
Yeah, thank you, Perry Primary, over in that area there. Uh, you know, that, that line is now reaching capacity. We have problems with the surcharging every time we have a significant rain event, uh, and we would like to recommend that council authorize us proceeding about obtaining funding for that through the Perry Public Facilities Authority. If you approve this today, we will make our presentation to the Perry Public Facilities Authority, and they will come back and advise us, uh, whether they concur with that or not. As you can see, the first project is estimated around $2 million and the second at 2.2 million. Uh, if it is approved by the Perry Public Facilities Authority, they will issue a revenue bond. We will be the secures of that revenue bond, and it will be a 20-year payout for the bond, similar to the other projects we did, for example, Legacy Park and Heritage Park and some of the tennis court improvements, you know, some of those projects that have gone through there. Uh, this is something definitely that needs to be addressed, uh, and I think that it's in the best interest of the city to proceed, and we'd like your authorization to approach the Perry Public Facilities Authority about that.
Council members, questions relative to these two projects that we're all looking for bonding funds to complete? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request from the administration to approach the Perry Public Facilities Authority relative to acquiring funding for acquisition and improvement of the Houston County Government Building and upgrading sewer mains serving the Perry Branch area. The motion is second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the request was approved unanimously. Thank you. Item A is other business and supplemental agenda. Eight A is the COVID-19 credits. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and councilman, your board pack is a memo from me requesting council to authorize four items relative to the COVID-19 virus as it affects the city of Perry. Uh, City Perry has a corporate entity, not citizens, all that kind of stuff. Uh, first one we're recommending is that any commercial city service account will have 60 days after the stay-in-place order is lifted to bring the account current. And as you may know, a number of particularly smaller businesses have difficulties, and, uh, we think that this would be an opportunity for them, hopefully, to get back living on their feet. Second would be any residential city service account will have 30 days after the stay-in-place order is lifted to bring the account current. Now, this is across the board for all our accounts. Third would be any residential account holder who proves he or she was furloughed or laid off after the mayor's executive order 32420 or subsequent orders related to COVID-19 virus by the governor or mayor will have late fees, penalties, et cetera, withdrawn until the home, the stay-at-home order is lifted. And fourth, any business required to be closed by the mayor's 32420 executive order or subsequent orders related to COVID-19 virus by the governor or mayor until the stay-in-place order is lifted shall have all late fees and penalties removed. Now, what this means is, is that if I am a residential account holder and I have lost my job or I have been furloughed because of the COVID-19 virus issue, then until the stay-at-home, uh, or stay-in-place order is lifted, and the assumption is the person will be able to go back to work, uh, there will not be any penalties or fees added on to the account relative to delinquents. This does not, I want to emphasize that, does not remove the requirement to pay your base charges, your consumption fees, all that type of stuff. This is just the penalties. If you are a business and you were closed by the mayor's executive order or the governor's, for example, the Lee Gilmore Barber Shop slash Disco, uh, I would have, that my business underneath this would not have any late fees, penalties, or charges added until the stay-in-place order is lifted. Once again, all the basic charges, the base fee charges, the consumption charges, all that type of stuff will remain in effect, and we are not- that type of stuff will remain in effect, and we are not proposing to waive any of that. The administration's position on that is that this is a fair compromise for businesses or individuals affected by COVID-19 without severely jeopardizing the financial situation of the city.
Council members, what questions do you have relative to the recommendation that has been made by the administration? I concur. I concur. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation relative to stay-in-place order as outlined by the administration, Mr. Gilmore.
Who?
Motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the recommendation for the COVID-19 credits was approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Item nine is council member items. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor, one item. I've received a number of calls this week, some concern relative to the 41 apartment development regarding specifically, I guess, a change in elevations. And I just want to make sure, on behalf of the residents there, I just want to make sure that we are honoring all the commitments we made to them at that time, and also just sticking to everything that we spoke to in that special acceptance. I just received a lot of calls on this, so I wanted to put that forward for our knowledge and consideration. That's the only item I have.
Anything? Ms. Peterson?
No, sir. I've received some of the same calls, and been involved in that as well, so it is good to bring it to council.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Bynum-Grace?
Well, I have received a lot of calls, and I did go over today at the new park, Legacy Park.
Uh huh.
My family seem to think that that's a little swimming pool over there.
Right.
And they also think that it's a running pad, because the kids were running across it like it was something else. So I'm kind of wondering, is there some way we can figure out something to put up there to keep that from happening in the future, for our safety sake?
Mr. Gilmore, any thoughts on that?
We are talking about the water feature at Legacy Park, correct?
Yes.
We will place some signs, plaques on the water feature itself, that it's not for waiting.
Okay, but they are also running across it. You know, the pond itself?
Yes.
They're running across it.
Then we will also on the plaque say you can't run across the feature, unless you all want to do something more pronounced.
I think we need to do something more pronounced, because I'm afraid that something is going to happen, and then we're going to be liable. So I think we could probably come up with something that we could put on there, but I think it'll take a little time for us to figure out what to do, but something has to be done, because it's continuing going on.
We will, staff-wise, get some proposals back to you all to take a look at. I will tell you, as the manager, I am hoping we don't have that fantastic site to honor the veterans and the best people all cluttered up with a bunch of signs. That's my concern, that we shouldn't allow, you know, that we shouldn't stop what's going on. The other thing I'm not quite sure on, though maybe not, is it could be one of these things that's an attractive nuisance right now, because it's new, and the splash pad isn't open, you know, see what I mean, and some things like that. But we'll definitely take a look and get some proposals back for you all to take a look at and see. And then whatever you all are comfortable with, that's what we'll go with.
Thank you. It's such a beautiful place, and it's getting a lot of attention, and I would be surprised that the parents allowed their children to do it since they brought them there.
Thank you, Ms. Bynum-Grace. We'll look into that and see what kind of solutions we can put in place to, unlike Mr. Gilmore, we build that to honor citizens and veterans of our city, and it's, to me, is a very sacred place, and I would hate to see that turn out to be that, so we'll work towards that. Mr. Keen?
Kevin.
Doug Albritt?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
One small issue on Hill Road. People have been putting trash by it, and the arm that goes down and gets, has made a tremendous hole in two locations, right near the highway, I mean, just right, if you run off the highway that far, you end that sucker.
Okay.
We need to do something about that before somebody tears up a car or hurt somebody.
Mr. Smith, would you have your team look at that tomorrow, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. You have anything for us tonight, Mr. Smith?
No, sir, I don't.
Ms. Newby, any additional things this evening?
No, sir, nothing further.
Mr. Gilmore, anything additional this evening?
Yes, just one, Mayor. Mayor and council, I hope each of you have gotten a copy of the history-by-week and totals of the COVID-19 data for Houston County. What we are going to be doing is providing that format to you each Thursday, so that you will be able to tell where we are in Houston County, not only on the total number of cases reported and deaths, but more importantly, at least from the manager's standpoint, what is the volume of the cases increasing each week? The reason I think that is imperative is that if you take a look at a lot of the criteria relative to where we are and what we can do, the primary thing is, have you reached your plateau, and are you starting to see a decline relative to the cases? And so that way, we'll provide that data to provide a background for you on some of the decisions that are going to be coming up that you're going to have to face. For example, as I mentioned earlier, when would you be comfortable to open up the splash pad? When are we going to have the Perry Arts Center open up? When are we going to open up City Hall? See what I mean? So if you have this data to take a look at, I think it'll be beneficial for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Appreciate the information. Item ten is department head and staff items. Ms. Harden, anything else this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Way back there in the back?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Clark, anything this evening?
No, sir.
Is there anyone else? See, other folks have left. Is there anyone here from the general public that would like to address council at this time? Yes, sir.
Move up here. This is the most uncomfortable mask in this room, and I assure you, I have a hard time breathing, let alone speaking. My name is Gordon Grimm. I'm the president of the Cheshire Homeowners Association, referring back to Mr. Jones's concern relative to the apartment complex on 41. The elevation issue, just to kind of go back to the understanding back when the exceptions were all agreed upon, was conveyed to the citizenry that there would be no deviations from those exceptions. I have watched, over the last several weeks, as that whole project has gone forward, the changes and the development of the retention pond, and I know initially when we had the big rains back earlier in the year, that there were a lot of calls around the rains and the fact that we were getting flooding in the neighborhood, on the homes on Inverness, where the water was just flowing between the houses, and there were calls made to the city, and the response was, we're going to have to get out there and quote-unquote "make some changes." So, to date, I'm assuming that some changes were made to the initial plans relative to the retention pond, and I guess my concern is that with this last big rain that we just had Sunday night, the retention pond on Inverness, on the north side of Inverness, was almost full to overflowing. I kind of monitor that retention pond through the day and night when we get big rains. And the pond behind my home, which is now the retention pond common to that apartment complex, was dangerously full as well. We had one night of, I don't know, six to seven inches of rain. Back when we were having these city council meetings, there was a lot of concern from the residents of Cheshire around what if we have multiple days of six or seven-inch rains, et cetera, that that could be a big problem. So I guess concern number one is, have changes been made to the retention pond? And number two, are more changes potentially necessary? Because what I saw Sunday night, we were dangerously close to overflowing on our retention pond on the north side of Inverness. So I just throw that out there as a caution that, one, if there were changes, I know I sat in the meeting, and Mr. Gilmore sat directly across from me and assured me and several other people, Jack James was in that meeting, that there would be no changes, and if they were, we would know about them. So to date, I don't know what the changes were to that pond, and if more are going to be necessary. The second one, going back to the elevation issue, it was our, and I say "our," the citizenry, again, the residents of Cheshire, it was our understanding that when this apartment complex went in, and we fought, if you will, for that security wall, privacy wall, et cetera, and thank goodness that we did, but that was what it was going to be for, was to maintain some level of privacy in our neighborhood. So I was ecstatic to see the wall as it was being built. They've done a wonderful job with the wall. The problem is, is as the wall has started to near completion, I watched from my backyard truckload after truckload after truckload of fill material being brought in, and to the west of the retention pond, I watched as the ground level, the grade, if you will, was brought up to a level that now, if this is the top of the wall that is surrounding the property, the foundation for all of the apartments is here. So it has, in essence, negated what the wall was built for, because the apartments, if you look, and I think some photographs have been taken, if you look at the foundation versus the top of the wall, there's basically one course of brick, or block, if you will, between the top surface of the foundations, which the apartments haven't even started to be built yet, and the top of the wall. So it is, in effect, completely negated the purpose of the wall. So I guess the question is, and it goes back to Robert's concern via the homeowners, has that elevation changed? I know there's been some folks who've been looking online at the city website, looking for elevation drawings, and there are no elevation drawings available for anybody to look at. So the question is, has the elevation changed from when we all agreed to go forward with this project or this apartment complex? Has that elevation changed from what it was back in March timeframe last year to now? Because it certainly looks like it does. When you sit in my backyard around my swimming pool, you can see the foundations. We were on the assumption that the foundations were going to be at the existing grade, or certainly not to the top of the wall like it is today. And then one other item, and Ms. Peterson did a wonderful job of addressing this issue, but I'm not sure that the city is aware of it, but the contractor was out there one day last week at 4:30 in the morning with concrete trucks, a concrete pumping machine, and a slew of workers out there yelling and screaming across that property, and woke up the whole neighborhood, and it was not a very pleasant situation. I just wanted to bring that to the council's and the city's attention. Ms. Peterson did a great job of addressing it, assuring me that they would not be doing that any further. But those three items, making sure they're not working before they're supposed to, and then if there's been changes to elevation, and it certainly would be wonderful to know if whatever changes were made to that retention pond, are they adequate? What changes were made? Because there's been nothing communicated to the homeowners there. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Gilmore, would you take those three questions and see if you can supply Mr. Grimm with some answers to those, please?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else here this evening?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I have a question from Ms. Pamela Smith on Facebook, asking about what the city requires for us regarding the salon industry as it relates to the governor's new executive order
You know, need to handle that one? As far as the governor's executive order, she needs to get a copy of that, of the executive order, and my understanding is there's going to be guidelines that are going to be issued between now and Thursday relative to the reopening of businesses. Keeping in mind that the governor has outlined 20 different items that when you reopen your business, that will be required, and they're online as well. So compliance with the letter and the intent of the executive order is what the governor is requesting, and I would refer her to that. Or if she's got additional questions, there is a COVID-19 hotline directly into the governor's office that I would recommend that she call in and ask questions relative to that if she has additional questions. As far as the city of Perry, we don't have any guidelines. We're following the lead of the governor and the recommendations he has made and his staff, and we will be following the additional guidelines that he puts out sometime later on this week. Does that answer that question? Anything else on there tonight?
No, sir, that's it.
Thank you. Item 12 is mayor's items, and I, you know, we'd like to talk to everybody that, I'd like to tell you that we still have shelter in place through an executive order from the governor until April the 30th. And I think everybody needs to keep that in mind as we go forward. I would also recommend, as you can see here this evening, everyone in the room has got masks. Everybody in the room is anywhere from eight to 15 feet apart. I'd like for you to consider that while you're out in public, maintain your social distance. We've got the virus on the downturn, we'd like to see that continue, and we encourage everybody to use those guidelines. In addition, it's personal hygiene as far as washing your hands, and we encourage you to continually do that. I know that my hands are almost raw, I think, from washing them and putting Purell on them, but I think it's important that we continue to do that to defeat this virus that we're dealing with today, and we can get back to some normalcy of life that we've enjoyed here in Perry. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of real estate.
Who move?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. We will move into executive session at this time. We're returning to regular session out of our executive session. Council members, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve a sales agreement with Houston County Board of Commissioners to purchase a building known as the Old Courthouse, sitting on Carroll Street, for the price of $1.6 million. The closing date will be ownable before December the 30th of 2021, and the established interest rate will be 2.25 for a five-year term, starting at the end, starting at closing date. At this time, I'll accept the motion to accept those terms and conditions as outlined.
Who move?
Motion in a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Please let the record show that the proposal was approved unanimously. One of the things that Ms. Bynum-Grace asked me to bring up- One of the things that Ms. Bynum-Grace asked me to bring up this evening is the importance of everyone filling out their census forms. It's extremely important that we do that. It, it has a large bearing on the number of congressional seats we have in Washington, as well as our correct proportion of funding that comes from the federal government. So it's extremely important that all of us take the time and fill out those census forms and get them back, and we would appreciate your cooperation on that. If there's nothing else to come before us, we will stand adjourned.